Good evening. Welcome to the Thursday, July 13th, special meeting of the Marion City School Board. Would you all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Veronica, call the roll, please.
Sure. Mr. McKinnis?
Here.
Mrs. McKay?
Here.
Mr. Ratliff? Mr. Wiedling?
Here.
Ms. Dyer?
I'm sure they'll be in soon. We come now, do we need an executive session for anything under administrative hires? Or certified hires?
Oh. Hold on.
I hear you, but I can't get my microphone off. I got it stuck.
I do believe Ms. Dyer might have just pulled it off, so.
All right. Mr. Ratliff is here. Okay. And Mrs. Dyer is on her way in. This is why we don't meet on Thursday nights. All right. All right. We're right here. Do we need to go into executive session?
Yeah, probably.
President McKay, we had some agenda changes. Do you want to, do you want me to tell you those now from the agenda that was shared yesterday?
Okay.
We've added a teacher for hire, Madison Connell, Barfield 3rd grade, that's on your agenda, and then we deleted Austin Regal as a hire. So those are the two changes from yesterday.
All right. Do I have a motion to go into executive session regarding employment?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
No, second.
All right. Call the roll. Do we need discussion first?
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Wiedling?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay.
Yes, motion carried, so we're going to hopefully just be on first even. All right. We've got everything done over there, so we're going on to employment, administrative hire. Item A, we'll have to do these separate. Superintendent recommends the approval of the following non-teaching supplementals.
You have administrative hires first.
Right, why did I, I'm not on the right page. I flipped the page. All right. Administrative hires. Superintendent recommends approval of Jen Muspel Kirkham, supervisor to your contract effective August 1st. Do I have a motion?
So moved. No second?
We've had our discussion. Call the roll, please.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Wiedling?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. Item D, resignations. Superintendent recommends the approval of the following resignations, and those names are listed below. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Wiedling?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. Certified hires, item B, superintendent recommends the approval of following certified employees, and their names are listed below. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Wiedling?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. Classified hires, item C, superintendent recommends the change in step for Cindy Jones, bus driver, from step zero to step one. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Wiedling?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. Classified hires, item C, superintendent recommends the change in step for Cindy Jones, bus driver, from step zero to step one. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Wiedling?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. Item D, resignations. Superintendent recommends the approval of the following resignations, and those names are listed below. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Wiedling, you were first, weren't you?
Yes.
I keep doing that tonight. Mr. Wiedling?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
I'm going to ask for discussion on that, but are we going to do like exit kind of surveys for these people that are leaving us?
Yes, we're doing exit surveys for everyone.
Okay, all right, yes.
Okay. Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried.
And thanking them for their service, Madam President.
Yes, I appreciate everybody's hard work for us. Item E, non-teaching supplementals. Superintendent recommends the approval of the following non-teaching supplemental positions, and there are two. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Wiedling?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. And we do have one termination. Superintendent recommends the termination of employment with Billy Brown Jr., custodian two, effective July 12th, 2023. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Wiedling?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. All right, now we come to the fun stuff and why we're here. So I would like to introduce Cheryl Ryan from Ohio School Boards Association, and she's our facilitator, and I think she's got someone here with her, and I'll give you a minute to set up, and then you can introduce, and everybody, you guys can get some pizza and some cookies.
No, it's right here.
All right, I'm going to plug you.
It's as far as it'll go.
Right here, does this work? Thank you very much.
Let's see if it works.
Sure.
I have a, I have a.
If you have a strip here, otherwise I didn't give my work my best that long. Just like to turn the screen. And do we want to move our tables so we can see the screen? Okay. Always move the chairs. All right. Yep, there it is. Technology's always wonderful when it works. Okay, where's the best way for me to stand?
You're going to stand right in front of the microphone.
Hi, y'all, sorry I changed my back. Hello, everybody, again, I'm Cheryl Ryan, and I'm with the Ohio School Boards Association, and I'm here with my colleague, Ms. Seiko. He and I represent the Board Services Division tonight as we talk with you about some topics that will lead us to your having the opportunity to create and implement, along with your superintendent, a workable plan for current work performance over the course of the next year aligned to your current strategic plan. And so Quinn and I have put together this board workshop. Some of it will involve your, I hope, getting up and moving around a little bit. I hope that's okay with you. No? Is that okay? Okay. So I'm going to give apologies ahead of time to your tech person, but I hope that a lot of this will be benefited by your active participation in more ways than one. So we're going to get started, and we'll see where this goes. I invite your participation and your comments. And I have to have you come up here and click for me if this isn't going to work. Okay, so here's what we talked about putting together for you this evening. The first is critical issues. Critical issues, is that the first slide? Yeah, we're going to talk about critical issues, and that's where we're going to ask for the board's input. So critical issues facing Marion City Schools. We are going to talk about the what. The what is what the board is responsible for. What do we want to do? What do we want to accomplish? What do we want to achieve? Where do we want to go? Sometimes the where is well, and we're going to talk about that. We are going to talk about how the board standards are related to the four pillars. The four pillars are specific to Marion City Schools, your four work areas, current goal areas, et cetera. We're going to talk about outcomes, board expectations, and that's another area where the board would get involved from a governance perspective, establishing what they expect, the bar they hope will be set by the board's work. So we'll talk about the board outcomes. Then we will get to the how. The how is administrator-related. Administrator, all of her teams are responsible for taking those board outcomes linked to the district's pillars and to administrator standards, and designing a work plan that will hopefully get the district where the board has designated that they hope that it will go. We'll talk a little bit about goals for Olympia, and I put executive session on there because I wasn't sure whether this was something that would qualify or not, whether you would need to do that or not, but it's there if you need to do that. Next slide, please. All right, then I want to talk to you a little bit about our ideas for helping you with setting goals for the superintendent that all five board members are aware of, have agreed to, and that your administrator and then the other administrators in your district and then on down the line are all aware of, so that everybody's working together towards the stated goal, the same goals that the Board of Education has set for the district. We'll talk a little bit about how they should be specific and measurable, and some assistance for her in making sure that that is the case. All of this receiving board approval. Something about formative evaluation. I'll provide to you a potential format and calendar for that, and then our thoughts on what a summative evaluation that would happen next spring theoretically might look like. So, first of all, I wanted to start with your mission, inspiring a community of achievement. And when I talked with your board president on the phone, she mentioned the possibility of your renewing, becoming reinvested in a strategic plan, but we're going to work tonight from your current strategic plan, your current mission. Your current mission statement, inspiring a community of achievement, which is a wonderful statement about hopefully what you are all about. Your mission statement is what you are all about, not just you, the board, but administrators, teachers, staff, and hopefully everybody in your community getting behind that mission statement. All right, so also, much of your work, in fact, 100% of your work, if you are on the same soapbox I am, is that 100% of your work should be able to be directly linked to your district goals. And here at Marion City Schools, those are what you refer to in your documentation as your four pillars. These are your current four pillars, leadership, learning, literacy, and legacy, and that's what we're going to work from. But in the next slide, go ahead and Quinn, thank you, we're going to talk about why pillars are important. So they are a natural connection for community engagement and for communication. So when the board meets, if you are able to, I always say it sounds a little bit cheesy, but when you get used to it, it works like a charm. They are a natural connection for community engagement, because as you work as a board, you talk about things, and hopefully you say things like, well, as everybody knows, one of our four pillars is legacy. And this is a topic that directly affects the legacy of our district, or the legacy of our staff members, or our legacy as a board. If you can learn to talk via the pillars of your district, you will begin to think in terms of the pillars of your district. So I always think when a district has very specific, very good, broad goals, like your current ones, that they provide a natural vehicle for all of the board to work together towards progress in those areas. They're another top-notch vehicle for board meetings, right? So they provide a continual touch point for rationale and assessment. Before we make the decision, let's talk about how it advances our goals. Tonight, we're going to talk about outcomes that the board wants to see, and so, and then that will lead towards a work plan for your superintendent, and it could be your treasurer and other administrators in your district. So if the board can then also speak to how is it that this decision we're making tonight, or this recommendation that the superintendent is making, or that the treasurer is making, advances our pillars and the outcomes that the board said we wanted to see over the course of the next 12 to 18 months. Then work plans and annual evaluations for all staff within the district, including the superintendent and treasurer, should link to those pillars and standards, and we're going to show you hopefully an easy way, a visible way, to make that happen, a way that's understandable to all of you, as well as to other administrators and staff and community members. But I always, my biggest example is if you have, for example, one of your pillars is about literacy. So if you have all, you know, you take the board all the way down, and you have a part-time literacy tutor in a primary building, and that part-time literacy tutor is told that one of the goals of the district is to improve literacy. And he comes to work, and he works part-time for you, and he reads to kids, and he works with dyslexic students, or autistic students, or gifted students, and at the end of the year, those students show progress, and the principal in that primary building goes to him and says, you know what, you were directly responsible for an improvement in our assessments, an improvement in our literacy scores here at this school, and that person knows that he contributed directly to goals that were set by the district and by the board, and that improves morale within the district. So our goal when we help a board with their current strategic plan or in doing a new strategic plan is in helping the board to set outcomes and goals that everybody in the district understands and can work toward in their own personal way and push the district forward. Does that make sense? Okay. So here's where the board will get started tonight. To make progress and work directed under our pillars, we have to address critical issues. So critical issues are the things that are going to get in your way if they're not fixed. Sometimes critical issues are within your direct control, and sometimes they are not. Sometimes they are external. The biggest example of this that I always use, because it applies in every single district in our state and probably across our country, is poverty, right? We can't in our school district solve for poverty. I wish we can. We do things like breakfast programs, and lunch programs, and summer backpack programs to nibble away, literally, at the margins of poverty and hunger, but we can't solve it. Yet it still remains a critical issue. So that's an example of an external issue that I would list as a critical issue. They can be internal. Quinn and I are currently working on a search in a district, and one of their critical issues is turnover, staff turnover, right? So there may be external factors that are contributing to that turnover, but it's an internal issue to the district. Hanging on to the staff they want to hang on to is important to them, and so they need to solve for that. Critical issues can be big, or they can be small. They can be easy to fix, they can be expensive, they can be things that might take a couple years. You might be, you know, one of the districts we work that says, you know, we need a new football stadium. Even if they have the money for that football stadium and the community support for that football stadium, it's a two- or a three-year project, right? So critical issues can be mountains, as I've indicated in the picture here, or they can be molehills, and we hope that many of yours are molehills. But they can also be, what's working here? What is something that's happening here in Marion City Schools that students or staff have rallied around that we'd like to get bigger? Oftentimes, we hear preschool in this kind of conversation, right? We have preschool here, but we're not serving enough of our kids. We have way more demand than we have capacity, or we have way more demand for after-school programs than we have capacity. So what needs to get bigger or better, that can be a critical issue. What do we need to do more of than less of, and if we do this, you know, is it going to be what I always call, you know, everybody calls the low-hanging fruit? Is it something that we can fix relatively easy if we just devote the time or money or staff to it? Or is it something that is, you know, complex and maybe going to take a lot more time or a lot more expertise than we have here within the district? So what I would like to do now is ask you all, all five of you, and Olympia, if you would like to participate as well, your administrators, Veronica, if you'd like to, I'm going to give you each a piece of chart paper and a marker, and I would like you to just spend a few minutes writing, brainstorming to yourself. If you could fix anything, grow anything, get rid of anything, solve for anything, what are your critical issues? Okay? Can we start there? Ted? Thank you. All right.
It is so cold in here. You look miserable. I'm sending you the strategic plan.
Oh, okay.
How you doing?
Very well.
You like your new job?
Well, so they are, aren't I?
Both of you.
Two months.
A month and a half.
Don't ask them that, I don't want to relate.
So sticking them up on the wall makes it easy for you, it coming to our table makes it easier for you. Please do whatever you would like, and I would just want you to go to town on your issues.
Are we working on these separately?
I don't have a marker.
I don't have a marker, I'll give you a marker. Kevin, you don't have a paper?
Yeah, I'd like you to do them separate.
Starboard.
I didn't get one.
You got a marker.
Yeah, if you would do this for me, I wasn't prepared about this. Do it not like slam verticals, we got to, because we're going to be surveying or check marking or whatever. So give each idea a little bit of breathing room, but yeah, list them all, and they don't have to be in any certain order, but your take on if you solve it out, what would be about five?
I feel like you or you should collaborate with me.
Speed work makes progress.
Speed work, I want to be in 2023.
Think about curriculum, you can think about extracurriculars, you can think about soft skills of students, you can think about needs of teachers, think about your community.
The board can do something better, what would that be?
Let us see.
Is anybody on the spreadsheet?
We look at the spreadsheet.
I'm kidding.
Not sticking?
Not sticking.
I didn't tell you.
I was thinking you had something to get, but it's still the 2.2.
Our secretary here is.
I've been in your workshops.
And hers is always.
Teach your handwriting, you know?
Do your own work.
Oh, I need to have that.
It's like everybody's got paperwork almost.
Your is great, right there.
Are we supplying supplies for the given chair?
Yes.
You good?
Yep.
Get them all? Thank you all.
All right. So good job, thank you all for that. Clearly, this is, you know, not hard for you to do, right? Every school board member understands very, very clearly that at least some of the issues that are most important and most critical, and probably if we asked any of your teaching staff, any of your classified staff.
So sticking them up on the wall makes it easy for you, it coming to our table makes it easier for you. Please do whatever you would like. And I would just want you to go to town on. Are we working on these separately?
Did you get one?
I don't have a marker. Can I have a marker, I'll give you a marker. Kevin, you don't have a paper? Yeah, I'd like you to do it separate, start with.
I didn't get one.
You've got a marker.
If you would do this for me, I wasn't prepared about this. Do it not like slam verticals together because we're going to be surveying or check marking or whatever. So give each idea a little bit of breathing room. But yeah, list them off and they don't have to be in any certain order. But your take on if you solve it out, it would be about five. Think about curriculum, you can think about extracurriculars. Think about soft skills of students. Think about needs of teachers. Think about your community. The board can do something better, what would that be? Not sticking? I think what I'm going to do is I'm going to put them all here.
Are we supplying supplies for the given shift?
Yes.
You good?
Yep.
Get them all? Thank you all. Alright. So, good job, thank you all for that. Clearly, this is, you know, not hard for you to do, right? Every school board member understands very, very clearly. At least some of the issues that are most important and most critical. And probably if we asked any of your teaching staff, any of your classified staff, even community members and parents to do this exercise, as we often do in a broader strategic planning initiative, many of the same issues would be on their minds as well. So, I'm sure that you are reflective of many, many of those thoughts. So, the first thing we want to do is we're just going to quickly review the list and we're going to see whether or not there's anything that is duplicated, right? I'm guessing that, oh, I'm sorry, Amber Walker. I'm guessing that there are things that are on multiple lists. Sometimes there are things that will be on all lists, right? So, did we see anything, I see attendance on at least three lists. So, Quinn, if you would do me a favor and if you would cross it off of, leave it on, let's leave it here, that's fine. And cross it, leave it on the red list, just because it's big, I like that. And let's cross it off of any other list where we see attendance. Yeah, engagement's separate, so that's good, leave them that. What else is on more than one list here?
There's one on the bottom left that says student and staff. I think it says attendance.
And the fact that it says and staff attendance, that's interesting to note as well. Alright, academic achievement, top left on the orange list there. That's going to be probably, I know that's on, at least I saw it on at least one other list. Is test scores? Rocky, that was on your list, would you say academic achievement and test scores are the same?
Yeah, it's the same, probably, yeah.
Okay, so why don't we take on test scores there and achievement?
And probably graduation rate is.
You know, I think that's a good point, but I think there's, I think there's some difference there. So, let's leave graduation rate for now. The next one on the orange list, staff and family retention and culture. What do we mean by that, who wrote that?
That's me, I just think the two are intertwined. If the culture is positive, for lack of a more descriptive term, then staff and families are going to stay here.
Okay, so it's hanging on to our students is what you meant by that. Okay, great, I like that. Alright, and the next one is continuous focus on discipline, okay? Discipline, is that on another list? Alright. And genuine parental involvement, I love that, genuine parental involvement. Some people use the word engagement, but engagement can be community wide, right? Not just parents, but family engagement is there. So, let's decide what we want to call it, I think we're splitting hairs on some of these. Quinn, why can't you cross off engagement on the black list to your right? Oh, there's two black lists, sorry. The one to your right. Let's leave family engagement, maybe cross it off on the bottom orange list. Left, far left.
Yeah, I know.
I'm seeing that as one.
I'm not seeing it. Is it parental involvement like that, Mark?
Yeah, I think that's engagement.
And then there's one pink list, number five.
Here we go, perfect. Academic improvement is on, that's on the brown list on the bottom. Is academic improvement the same as achievement to the person who wrote that? Yes or no?
I don't know what achievement meant.
Achievement?
What did they mean by academic achievement?
Well, you know, that's an excellent question. In my mind, academic achievement is, every child improves their learning in the way that's right for that kid, for that student. They're growth?
That's what you're talking about, right?
I'm talking about growth, it might not, it's not necessarily about getting an A on a grade card, but it's about.
It's test scores, you're talking about test scores. That'd be proficiency, right, you're having a level that you're going to be proficient at in areas. You're talking about growth going from bottom to top.
Great point, great point. Let's leave improvement there because I see that different as achievement than.
The way you've explained it, great.
Sustainability of programs. So, is that financial or what do we mean by that?
Probably financial.
Okay, are there other financial related?
In the red.
Fiscal responsibility, that's, I think that's, I think it's different. See, to me, and correct me if I'm wrong, Rocky, I think this is your list. Fiscal responsibility is spending money wisely, being transparent. It's kind of the practices and processes around maintaining our budget, right? That's how I would see that, right? So, I would see sustainability of programs as in the same family, but maybe different. So, let's leave that for now. Improved culture of district, that's on the black list on the left. Mentoring of administrators and teachers. Ohio State Legislature, lack of support for public education or PK-12 support, that says. Attracting quality staff, that's I know on more. Staff retention was on one. Yeah. On the red list. Okay? Well, that's good, we know that that's on a lot of minds. Improving culture of district, that's, you've got trust on this black list on the right. I think that that is, trust is a real big issue. And many of these things would fall into a trust bucket. But we'll leave, I think improving culture of the district is a little bit more specific, so we'll leave that one. Funding, funding. Fiscal responsibility and funding, are those the same? Yeah? Okay, let's cross off funding on the black list on the left. Increased participation in extracurriculars, I don't see that on another list. Enrollment, increasing? And what does that say?
Pressure of charter schools.
Pressure of charters, yeah, okay. I think enrollment is a big issue for a lot of districts. Let's look at the pink list here, poverty. Poverty is on a list and I think it's on, it's on the green list. It's on the black list on the right, the green list, written up and down, vertical style.
And it's over here too.
Yep. Partnerships with community agencies. That's a good one. Access to mental health services for families and students. Experienced administrators, the loss of experienced administrators. That's a little bit on retention, I think we kind of got that with staff retention. Losing students to charters, I think we have that too in terms of attendance. And the last one to board get out of the way. Would say believe in the administration, so believe in administration and staff. So, that's a trust, that's in the trust bucket for sure. Full day pre-K, I see on the list. Common formative assessments and goals, yep. Non-academic barriers to success. PD, probably for staff and administrators, staff of all kinds. Staff morale on the green list. Sometimes I believe we lose sight of our vision. Sometimes we have too much, what's IKR?
I know, right?
I know, right? Is that, is that, okay.
Yeah.
Alright, separate.
Silos.
Silos, great division. Behavior, student behaviors, that was on the red list, right? So, we cross out of the green.
I actually copied, I think I saw that on Rocky's really big.
Yeah.
So, I copied off of him.
Copy of it. Okay, and then commitment, does it say commitment of something or just commitment?
It says commitment.
Okay, great. Alright, so I think we have consistent leadership on the brown list. Community and staff trust, right? So, that's trust and engagement, I think you can probably cross that off, that's been caught. So, these are all good. Alright, so, now, over here behind you, we're going to use these in a little, in a little while when we talk about outcomes. But these are your four pillars. And one of my staff members was really good at drawing pillars, I'm glad I didn't. So, what I would like you to do now is we look at these separate critical issues, is think about which pillar you believe they are most closely tied to, right? Most of these things will cross over. Trust affects all four of these, for sure, right? But some of them will more neatly fit within one of those pillars. And so, I would like to have that conversation relatively quickly as we go through these lists. So, as we, as you name it, Quinn is going to circle it in the appropriate color, okay? So, I'm going to let him solve that now, probably. Okay, so the very first one on the far left, academic achievement and challenging expectations, academic achievement, where would you say that ties to?
Learning.
Learning, alright, so that gets a blue circle.
Could also be literacy.
Yep, but if we have to pick one, we'll pick one, okay? So, staff and family retention and culture.
There's a second component under leadership. As I recall, there's two, one is culture. Oh, you've got to.
I know, I'm drawing blank right now.
Leadership, MCS will reduce staff turnover and improve open enrollment ratio by 10%.
Right, and I had, if I didn't know that or hadn't read that, I would say that when leadership is really solid, culture improves, right? So, when board leadership, when administrative leadership, when principal leadership, when leadership of everybody, I mean, everybody can be a leader, a student can be a leader, right?
That wasn't our, I don't think that was our pillar.
Oh, okay.
I recall that our pillar was.
It was like staff leadership and student leadership, sort of.
Like kids learning the behaviors of leadership.
Okay, I see.
It was leader in me. Leader in me.
Leader in me, thanks.
But then we did add staff leadership to that. Like you said, there were two parts to that pillar, it was staff and student.
Could have been.
Okay.
That's why I wish I had it front.
Retention for staff.
Okay, so if we were talking about that culture in terms of the four pillars, would you put that in the leadership pillar? Okay, so that gets a red circle. Okay, focus on discipline, where do we put that? Is that a cultural thing also, therefore leadership? Learning, you'd put that on learning, alright, circle it with blue. Enrollment, increasing enrollment? Staving off the competition of charter schools?
I don't think that's in any of them.
You don't think it's in any of them?
See, I think it's, to me, it's legacy. It would be legacy.
Okay.
If it's going to be in, if it's going to be in.
Alright, I'm hearing legacy, that's black. Increasing participation in extracurricular activities. Extracurriculars in general. Could be legacy, you know, if you have an Olympic, if one of your students becomes an Olympic gold medalist. But I also think extracurriculars, it's part of the learning process too, right?
We picked literacy because we needed to work with an L.
No, that's how we picked legacy.
Yeah. And then we had, then we had discussion on what does legacy like mean? Does it mean you're, I mean, it was.
It really means pathways.
I know.
It really was. Leave a legacy or be, create a legacy through your path.
What is your legacy at Clear City?
Yeah, I could see extracurriculars aligning with legacy then too. Alright, let's give it a black for now. The legislature? That kind of goes to your sustainability in some ways. It goes, there's a lot of things that that one could go into. But what does it affect mostly of these four?
It hits everything.
Everything?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, it hits, you know, where do we put funding, I mean.
Yeah, well, more recently it affects literacy.
Okay, let's give it a literacy for now. Brown. Alright, sustainability of programs, that's the funding and finance one. Did we decide that that was learning?
I would probably put it oddly enough in learning, but it's not just, it's really about financial.
Sure, it could be facilities, it can be operations, yeah. But all of that affects the quality of the learning that you're able to offer your students, right? So, I would give that a blue.
You missed mentoring of admin.
Oh, mentoring. Mentoring of administrators and teachers, mentoring.
Leadership.
There you go. Totally agree there, red. Academic improvement. We talked about that at the top with academic achievement, that's a learning. Consistent leadership? I bet that's leadership. Graduation rate. Gosh, I could see that in a couple places, right? Yeah, that's where I was going to, I was going to say I'd go legacy with that one. Yep, black. Attendance?
Do we do behaviors? The number one up there.
Oh, behaviors, absolutely, behaviors. Leadership. Behaviors gets leadership, is that what you're saying? Okay, behaviors is leadership, red. And attendance?
I think it's learning.
Okay?
Learning, right?
Yeah.
Attendance, learning? And you know, I would say the person that put it on there for staff and students, could be, maybe for students it's about learning, could be also a culture thing. For staff, it could be about culture and therefore leadership too. So, all of these, as we said, they bleed or they're, you know, diffused across all these areas. Fiscal responsibility. The trust among our community and our staff that we're spending money wisely and in the ways that, you know, putting our money where our mouth is.
Leadership.
That's what I would say, I'd probably give it mostly a leadership. Right, that's huge, that's absolutely huge.
Could fit all of them.
Yep, yeah, it could fit all of them, but if you have to pick one, what would you pick? Leadership? Okay, good enough. Family engagement.
I would put it under legacy or, well, yeah, I would probably put it under legacy.
Okay, good enough, legacy? Black, full day pre-K? Learning. Poverty. Socially, I would say poverty falls into, you know, I would probably put it in a legacy bucket. I think it certainly affects.
I would put it in leadership because it's, one component of that is teaching emotional, learning skills.
Okay, leadership, fair enough. Access to mental health, mental health supports.
Learning.
Again, that's leadership.
Yeah, I think so too. Back up at the top, we've got trust. Again, that's probably the broadest one up there and the one that affects every single one of these things. And because it starts at the top, I would suggest that trust goes into a leadership bucket. So, I'd put red there. PD, not meaning police department, professional development.
Learning.
Learning, okay. Common formative assessments and goals.
Learning.
Okay, good enough. Non-academic barriers. Things like poverty. Where did we put, we put poverty and where did we put leadership? Okay, let's align that one there. Staff morale. That kind of goes in a culture type bucket, doesn't it? Let's put that with culture, where did we put culture? Leadership? Okay, lose sight of our vision, that's leadership for sure. That's your governance, that's your mission as governors. Sometimes we have too much, I know, right? Which is, you know, I'm trying to think how I classify that, it's just.
Yeah, because I think sometimes we, and we as a board have been trying to not do it, but like, for example, one time we ordered a whole bunch of like literature type material and a lot of it just stayed on the shelf. Or sometimes we, our eyes are bigger than our belly kind of stuff. We just want that, want that, want that, and then we get it for them and they don't use it. And even with behavior type programs like, like right now, we're doing like the starfish thing from the police or whatever. And we're doing read for 20 and we're doing like all kinds of, a whole bunch of stuff. We have like too much that we can't focus on what the, what the dirty is.
I appreciate that, when you have too much happening, it's difficult to focus on any one thing, right? And so, when I read that first, I think to myself, it's sort of a follow through thing. It's kind of a, what do I want to say, it's a sticktuitiveness, it's a follow through and, and so. It's kind of a, um, what I wanna say, it's a stick-to-it-iveness, it's a follow-through and, and so, from the way you've explained it and the way I'm hearing how you're explaining it, I would say that's a leadership.
Yes.
Thing as well.
Do we call that focus?
Yeah, for sure, it's focus, but sometimes when you have, you know, too many balls in the air, you can't catch any one of them. So, um, that's how I would read that. Separate.
Silos.
Separate silos, so we have like six elementary buildings and everybody's like doing their own thing, you know? We've got one school that's doing leader in me, we got packs that everybody's supposed to be doing. Um, we have different, even like curricular kind of stuff. And so, nobody is doing the same thing so that when they feed into the middle school, you know, the first however, nine weeks or whatever, everybody's trying to get everybody on the same page.
Sure.
By the time you do that, they're at the high school and it's totally, you know, something different. But I do like the fact that, um, we had a robotics kind of a presentation from the middle school. And, um, now I understand that that's following the kids to the high school. So, it just, to me, sends a like mixed kind of stuff.
Yeah, and I think, I think that whole issue is a critical one that requires some balance, right? We want, we want our principals and our buildings to have some autonomy, right? But on the other hand, there needs to be consistency in terms of accountability, there needs to be consistency in the expectation for what every child who leaves fifth grade is gonna know and be able to do regardless of which of your primary buildings they came out of. Um, so, so there's a balance there. But to me, and I, and I'm not in your teacher's shoes, but this is another reason why abiding um, under, within a good strategic plan and creating it as you did, however long ago this was created, and sticking to it, and the accountability of having your buildings stick to it, it can look different. But these are your pillars, right? These are your pillars and how you, how these pillars look to you might be a little bit different, but they're the pillars.
And they can be, interpretation is the thing.
Right.
You know, I mean, and I don't disrespect that, but I just feel that, um, if, uh, if you Cheryl live in the Hayes District and then you move to Taft, it's two different schools that, to me, that mobility um, can be harmful, um, and we should have put that up there, that our kids are going, you know, migratory.
Transience, that issue, yep.
So, that's, that's what I'm thinking when I wrote that.
Okay, I appreciate that, and I would, I would say that that's a leadership thing. It stems from the strategic plan and, and the ability of the district to stay focused on it. And then commitment, the last one. Commitment.
Well. I know, um, I'll shut up because I don't wanna say anything else. I'm good. I just want people to commit to the red and black and, um, I want, I think it goes back to one of those, somebody had already put that, the trust and loyalty of our teachers and I just don't think that, um, teachers should get paid for everything that they do, you know, I mean, can they just do something without getting us stifled or? And, and their time is valuable, you know, but in, in some schools, I see people like at the door, ready to leave at the time, you know, dismissal time and stuff and, you know, and I know we don't keep kids after school anymore and that kind of stuff. And I just wanna see some commitment, you know?
Yep, and that, that again too is culture, right? It's definitely about culture and character and some of the other things all of you have mentioned, so I would, I would put that in leadership. Um, and so, if we look at our critical issues, I see, I see lots of red, right? Um, and, um, you know, there's a variety of, of, what was our brown, brown, our literacy. It's probably the least, the least noted up there. But, but I would argue, and research would bear out, that when people believe that leadership is strong across your corporation, your organization, your industry, whatever it is, that, that all these other things, um, take care of themselves. So, leadership will be a focus and I'd like you to remember that tonight as we move towards the next part of our work, okay? So, thank you Quinn for your circling and appreciate that, so we're gonna leave those there. Okay, so, we're gonna align our critical issues to our leaders. And, um, so, this is, I always work with districts, we work with a strategic plan, they're like, okay, we have critical issues and we have pillars, and that's what we just did. We aligned our critical issues to our, our four pillars, so we will come back to that here in a little bit. So, now we move to another part, we're gonna, I'm gonna ask you to think, think for me about kind of an Excel spreadsheet. So, as we talk this through in your mind, imagine an Excel spreadsheet that has your four pillars across the top, just in your head, okay? So, we all work with Excel spreadsheets and you have boxes down, you have columns and you have rows, all right? So, I want your columns to be your pillars. Now, these are your rows, okay? Governance standards are kind of your rows. And these are five standards for board governance that are borne out by decades of research, the Iowa Lighthouse Studies, um, Harvard Educational, Public Educational Research, et cetera. So, no matter what decade, from nineteen eighty-six when research started to two thousand thirteen when Iowa Lighthouse was, was last renewed, these are the things that based on studies from across the country with public education districts and school boards, these are the five standards that show, when, when boards do well at these things, their districts make improvement. The first one is responsible school district governance, and I've put a couple of, of examples there, it can cover a wide range of things. But in general, it talks about how well the board, and by the way, I made, Quinn, would you grab it out of my briefcase? Uh, the copies of the presentation, I made you all copies of this, I'm sorry. Um, these are the practices and the processes and the way we treat each other and how well we manage our discussion at board meetings. It can be small stuff like parliamentary procedure, it can be big stuff like making sure we, uh, respect the Open Meetings Act, uh, that we are transparent, that we, uh, do what we're gonna, what we say we're gonna do, uh, all of that kind of thing. It can be the golden rule stuff, the way we treat each other, the way we treat our superintendent, um, all of that kind of thing. But it's responsible school district governance, we show up for meetings when we say we are, we come prepared, all of that good kind of stuff. That is mostly what retains its standard number one. The second standard is about high expectations. And that's a commitment to and communication of high expectations for everyone. Applies to all students and staff, it applies to all students of any ability. Whatever are your gifts and your skills and your abilities as a student, we are committed as a district to your growth and your achievement, whatever that means for you. Um, and same with staff, we have a high expectation that our staff will perform and will achieve and will be worthy of the trust that we place in them and the check that, that we provide to them. Um, the third thing, conditions for student and staff success, this is a big thing for boards. And this is basically you as a board, making sure your buildings are standing up, that, uh, that, uh, that your modern, modern facilities, safe facilities, your buses run, um, they're safe, classrooms have light fixtures, air conditioning, all that kind of good stuff, that you mind your budget, you end the year in the black, uh, you manage the money the state gives you and more importantly, the money your community gives to you. Uh, you are transparent and responsible with your dollars and, and a lot of that goes to conditions for student and staff success. Can also be about PD, right? That the board supports professional development and that you are doing what you can and what your administration proposes to make sure that your teachers have the resources they need. The fourth one is accountability, most people understand accountability, accountability pretty well, but needs to be top to bottom and bottom to top, right? That nobody expects something from anybody else that they don't expect of from themselves. And that we, again, we do what we say we're gonna do and all of that good stuff and we set and follow through. And that sometimes we have to make, we have to have hard discussions, we have to make hard decisions because we really believe in accountability. Monitoring, assessment and evaluation, that's the board's job. A lot of what you, I hope you do is you take data and evidence collected by your administrators, most importantly, your superintendent, your treasurer provided to you for your understanding and you make calls about how well we're doing in things. And you, like we're gonna do tonight, we're gonna talk about outcomes and your expectations for those outcomes. Um, but monitoring, assessment and evaluation fall into the accountability standard. And then the fifth standard is community engagement. Interesting that the research bears out and shows that boards that do a good job with community engagement, uh, really do good work. And that, these are just some examples of some things that follow into communicate, community engagement and that can make a difference. So, those are the five governance standards. And they will work for you and with you, um, as a board and then as you move towards administrator, um, work plans and performance evaluation. Okay? So, here is the Excel spreadsheet I asked you to think about in your head. So, your pillars are across the top here and the five standards are down the left side. Now, the boxes in between are just stuff that I and Quinn just sort of spitballed when we were preparing for this workshop. So, what I'd like you to think about, and then maybe this is just me, but I'm a visual learner, I like, I like to see things in my head. And so, I think graduation rates, Rocky, that was on your list, right? So, I would think that that is a learning, I put that in a learning pillar. And as a board standard, to me, it goes under high expectations. It could also go under conditions for success, it could also go under accountability, graduation rates is a big one. But as we think about the board, things that boards are doing, boards are doing budget oversight. For me, that is for sure accountability, might also be community engagement. If a district is ever on the ballot or thinking about being on the ballot or, um, applying for a grant, et cetera, with some community agency, it could certainly go under engagement. But I put that in a leadership pillar and I called it accountability. So, as you think as a board about your board's work, I think a great discussion to have at board meetings, maybe in a board meeting, you have a meeting where all you're doing is you're talking about the board's role in learning and maybe you even distill it down even more and say, let's talk about the things that are in our learning pillar and that are about high expectations. And allows the board to focus your conversations and your learning around your vision and around the standards that boards improve if they improve those standards. Does this chart make sense to you? Maybe it's just me, but I, I like looking at things this way. Um, long-term facilities and resource planning, that's certainly a board responsibility at times. I believe it's accountability, it could also be engagement also, and it, and it certainly is about your legacy. Okay. So, as we move towards thinking about and talking about superintendent work plans, it's the responsibility of the board to set the bar. You have to set the bar. So, your administration can't know about the work that needs to be done until they know what your expectation is as a board. So, Quinn, I'm gonna ask you to grab your friendly markers again and go over here to these four sheets, may have to move these up so that you can write on them. And what I would like is just to have a conversation with all of you about outcomes. So, if you look over here at your red critical issues, let's start with leadership. And you look at the things that are circled in red and I asked the board, if you were gonna give direction to your administration, specifically Olympia, um, and her team about an outcome that you would expect that would solve one or more of these red circled critical issues. What is, what is the board expectation of an outcome related to leadership? So, improved behavior and discipline, right? I think that's a good one. And what I would encourage you to do, it doesn't have to be tonight, but think about how you can quantify that. So, um, behavior and discipline, an easy way to think about that, one of the ways, it's not the only way, is maybe truancy, right? I think sometimes truancy is linked to behavior and discipline. So, what is our current truancy rate and what does the board expect, how, how much does the board expect that to improve? Let's say over the course of the next year? Two percent, five percent, eight percent? Whatever that is, you can have that conversation based on the evidence. And then, if your administrative team knows that the board wants truancy to decrease this year by five percent, then we, then, then they can go about thinking about what do they need to do to make that happen.
One of the things that would happen, someone would have to have one in the name of it, but our staff enters disciplinary problems as experiments then in.
Edge climber.
Edge climber, thank you.
Edge climber?
So, the administration can look at where the problems are occurring, what kind of problems are occurring, are they major, are they minor? And so, if you see a reduction in some of that, if the staff, uh, inputs the information religiously, we'll get a good picture of what's happening behavioral wise.
Yeah, so, so that's super interesting. And I think about, you know, kind of what you've talked about there is referrals, right? Is what we used to call discipline referrals, right? And maybe, maybe one of her goals or her middle school principal is a drop in referrals by a certain amount of percent. So, what are we gonna do as an administrative team to either track better, maybe your tracking isn't good enough? It sounds like this edge climber gives you a way to track it. Um, but, but we want it to go down, we want our referrals to go down, we want out-of-school suspensions to go down. We want, um, violent behaviors to, you know, I think about all the stuff related to behavior. We want, um, um, teachers to report that, that more students are, um, completing homework assignments on time. I don't know, whatever it is. But you can have a conversation, so I would say behaviors, um, goes in here. And then, I would encourage you as you, as we have this conversation, to think about, especially as your administrator, specifically Olympia, um, comes to you and says, here's something I think we wanna try to address this outcome that you, you think or have in mind an agreed-upon specific measurable for them, right? But I want behavior to improve is great, but it might not be super helpful in terms of her creating a work plan. I want truancy to decrease by five percent. Or we want graduation rates to increase by two percent over the course of the next eighteen months, whatever it is. That's something that she can definitely throw, um, throw some time and consideration to. All right, so, improving student behaviors is what I would put there. And how about another one? Another expectation or outcome related to leadership?
For me, the staff, family, culture and communication, those, those two, three or four things all kind of meld together for me.
Okay.
And it also establishes trust. If our communication is going well, staff and family are feeling good about our community, our school district, and we've built the trust that we need to also increase enrollment.
I think that's a good one. Consistent communication. Consistent, if, if I'm a board and I say to my superintendent, we want you to work on, um, some things that would lead to better and more consistent communication, I think that's pretty specific, so that's a good one. Consistent communication. Anything else?
I think partnerships within the community agencies to overcome the poverty barrier is kind of key in our.
Okay. Increased community partnerships.
I think the fiscal responsibility is very important for us, especially in terms of looking at programs and the numbers of students in those programs and understanding the fiscal impact of programs that have enrollment as we, you know, move forward.
I'm wanting to say this a little bit, um, yeah, and I appreciate us pitching a lot of these things, but when we created these pillars, five and a half years ago, six, seven, we were thinking more along the lines of what promotes student achievement. Like fiscal responsibility would be something that would not be in a pillar necessarily because it, it's overarching responsibilities of board and administration. These were pillars that were intended for the staff to sink their teeth into and, and promote progress. So, last month, a comment about that is we're trying to pitch more some things into these pillars that were never intended. Now, maybe that doesn't mean we don't expand those, uh, pillars to include some of those things, but maybe. but maybe, or maybe we need an additional pillar, but these were intended to be learning covers.
Okay, I appreciate that. And I would say that many of these things are gonna cross, cross across all of these things, right? Fiscal responsibility being one of those things. And I also, it's a great opportunity to say, as we look at super, so, if, if you have, let's just say you've got these four pillars, and we're gonna talk about the superintendent standards, just like we had that chart that I showed you, that red chart for board work, we have one for superintendent work, and it meant she, she can't possibly attack something in every one of those boxes, right? Five standards, four goals, that's twenty boxes, right off the top. And if there's multiple things in any one box, that's more things to do, right? So, performance for the board, performance for a superintendent, treasurer, principal, everything is about priorities and prioritization. And the idea is that this conversation will help her brainstorm and do some thinking about a work plan that she can then bring back all of you, to you for consensus and some discussion. But I agree with you that fiscal responsibility is kind of an overarching thing, and what I would say to you as it pertains, in some ways pertains as much to your treasurer as it does to your superintendent, but that's one that's huge, and to your point, Kelly, I think it's important, but I would ask you to get not, maybe not tonight, but get pretty specific.
Okay.
So if, if, if the fiscal responsibility piece, and Rocky put it on your list too, if it's about educating your community, you know, what specifically could one or both of these administrators do to better educate your community? Is it, is it to present things differently at a board meeting? Is it to have listening sessions specifically about the budget with interested community members? Is, you know, whatever it is, what piece of that fiscal leadership and fiscal transparency is, does the board feel is most important between now and next May that your superintendent and/or your treasurer could, could think about?
You can have goals and expectations of the administrations or superintendent in particular that are not necessarily related to any of these pillars. I mean, I understand what you're saying, but there could be a goal of fiscal responsibility out there that, for example, in five years, you wanna make sure our forecast is positive enough.
Right. See, I would put that under leadership. I would say, I would, so, so my argument is, these four pillars are in your former strategic plan, or I guess your current, maybe dwindling strategic plan, as the four areas of focus for your work. And so that's why we built it, this, this workshop on these four pillars. Now, if you, if you reinvest in your strategic plan, it could be that one of your goal areas is everything that has anything to do with finance and your, your fiscal outlook as your district. In many districts, one of the district goals is indeed resources, a resources-related goal, and then everything, whether it's teaching and learning, or extracurricular, or professional development, or buses, or floor tile, you know, would fall into that bucket. So your point is well taken. All right. So, but I would say here, under leadership, I would put something about financial education, community education related to the budgets, district's budget. All right. Let's move towards legacy. Anything up there that's black, circled in a black market. I see family engagement, I see the increased participation in extracurriculars, I see enrollment, graduation rate. What, what specifically do you, would you see as superintendent work, or, or frankly, district work, in other administrators, teachers, and staff doing that would go to one of those critical issues?
In terms of a quantifiable outcome?
Yeah.
Yeah, just increased participation rates in the extracurricular activities.
Okay, good one. Increased participation, extracurriculars. I think graduation rate on its own is a great one, but I would ask you to attach a number to that. And I don't know what your current graduation rate is, but think about what's realistic in the next year to two, and, and I would, I would give yourself a target. It's hard to, to demand performance from an administrative team if they don't have a reliable and realistic target. And I would hope that your targets are stretchy, but not unrealistic. So think about that as well.
Can I go back to leadership for just thirty seconds?
Sure.
And that was, I didn't know that we were about to switch, but-
Sorry.
And it was brought up earlier, and I know we're doing the exit interviews, but in terms of staff and family retention, to identify the top five reasons as to why staff are choosing to leave. And again, then we can figure out, is this an internal problem, or is this external? Can we deal with it, or can't it? Same thing with families. Why did you choose to leave Marion City Schools? But to identify those.
That's a great one. That's a great one. Very specific targets, and I think in my head immediately have a couple of things we can do to try and get to those answers. Exit interviews, community surveys, staff surveys, et cetera, et cetera. Bunch of things. Even just focus groups with teachers, focus groups with community members, lots of things you could do, but I think, so your point specifically was reasons for departure?
Yeah, to put a number on it.
Okay.
What are the most frequently given reasons?
Top reasons for leaving Marion City Schools? And then you had also one, the reasons families would choose or not choose?
Yeah, whether it's staff or families, yeah. Someone's just, "I might be, got a job in a different state, who knows?"
Great. Thank you.
I think that also kind of dovetails into enrollment and how we are going to sustain the population we have and not lose enrollment.
Okay. So we want, enrollment was black, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I would, under legacy, I would say something about enrollment. There would have to be some target either about, not about loss of enrollment or gain in enrollment, but maintaining enrollment or growing enrollment would be, some number attached to that as well.
Probably see it up there, but when you did legacy, it was in conjunction with Knowledge Works, when they came in, we were one of the first districts that did the profile of graduate. And the swordman laws, we've got a poster out there someplace. But in that, I, I think one of the goals ought to be to increase the number of students that have a pathway to college, to military, to workforce.
Okay.
And so, I think under legacy, we want to improve our workforce, that might be the number of students, that might be those graduating from the jobs.
So it's, it's, it's improving the immediate ratio of students who have a direct place to go when they walk out of here in May, right? A pathway.
Can you also tie that into, because we've asked this question before, not only their initial preparedness upon graduation, but let's check back in after a year, three years, five years. Have they stayed on that pathway? Did they finish college? Did they find a career that is sustainable? So a follow-up, that was the point. Yeah, the, the long-term.
Okay.
Olympia, what did you say those E's were?
Creating the pathways and then monitoring, monitoring student success post-graduation.
Employed, enrolled, enlisted.
Employed, enrolled, enlisted.
Right.
And there's a fourth one. It's another E, what have I heard recently? I think they've added a fourth one to that. I'll think of it, I'll think of it a little bit, but those were the three that the state and ODE definitely started working with initially.
Yeah, and of course with OD, together as offices, workforce development.
Work, sure.
And having, we, we could increase the number of pathways that we have, whether it's engineering, or welding, or others.
Certifications, all of those kinds of things.
Increase our certi, students with certifications, increase students with certifications.
Yeah, so that's a fabulous outcome. And then when we talk about specific things that an administrator might come to the board with and say, "Here's the things we can do in the next year to address this outcome specifically," and it might be adding a certification program, it might be a better, a better partnership with the career center, you know, it could be a variety of things. It could be mentorships from Honda of America or something, it could, you know, whatever it might be. But those are, those are specific things that an administrator and her team could conceive of doing.
By internship, the number of internships you have.
There you go. Mentorships and internships.
Internships.
Okay. Let's turn to literacy.
That was the-
That's brown.
I don't think we have.
We have one of that.
We have legislation. Certainly the legislation in the last year pertaining particularly to dyslexia, training and assessment of students is huge, has been huge, will be huge for the next couple of years. So, so maybe just according to this outcome, addressing, addressing dyslexia legislation?
Makes me think, I mean, I'd have to look at what our pillars specifically are under literacy, but when we get to that point where we're doing our strategic planning, that, that pillar may be out here.
Okay. Well, you know, the third grade reading guarantee is, is, is important for, for school districts and-
Combined learning.
Those kinds of things. There are, there are a bunch of things that could go to literacy.
Because sometimes I think the pillars are great, but do we need four?
Well, it's interesting. What I'm hearing from all of you is that these pillars might not be working for Marion City Schools right now. Or they might not be specific enough, or they might not be broad enough, or maybe they're too broad in some ways, and so they're difficult to, to put your arms around.
Or, or maybe we create them for show and we just don't do anything with them.
Okay. You, you can say that, I guess, better than I can, maybe, but, but not that they aren't four fabulous words, and they're very noble objectives, but, but you're all making excellent points about maybe it's time to rethink enrollment.
Redefine.
Redefine, rethink, redefine.
And as to Ted's point, they were created more for learning and student stuff than some of the stuff we're moving over, strategic plan for financials and all these other things.
Where the focus was, if leader in me was so big back then, that's why leadership's up. Literacy was a huge concern. Again, you can see where the focus was when they were created.
And ideally, your strategic plan will be something that can be, will apply to, I don't wanna say can, will apply to, and will be pertinent to, and will be meaningful to everybody in your district, including parents and community members and business owners, et cetera. So there should be aspects of that strategic plan that are directly aligned to everybody's interest. But for now, let's move towards learning. And that is blue, and we've got all kinds of stuff there. Full A, 3K, academic achievement in general, growth, the growth thing, sustainability of programs. So, do you have specific outcomes that you think could be aligned to your learning pillar at this point?
I mean, the outcomes are generally test scores is how the state wants us to do.
Improved test scores, for sure. And again, we need a number, and that requires the board, over a course of probably many discussions, to tear apart your assessment data, your test scores, and to look individually where the gaps are, what the trends show, where are you doing, where are your teachers doing better with students, where are students doing better? What grades are doing better, what grades are really not doing better? And trying to work with your administration to understand where you really need to focus your attention. So, but I think improving test scores is-
I think wanting a growth too.
Okay.
Part of that for us.
Examining growth? Okay?
I also think this might tie in with graduation rate as well, but how reflective is a student's GPA upon graduation from Marion City Schools? How does that compare to their GPA when they go to college? In terms, does it, if you have a 5.3 GPA when you graduate from Marion City, does that truly translate? It's not always guaranteed, but is there a correlation between success in our district versus success at the next level? I don't know how you wanna wrap that around.
You've mentioned, you've mentioned it's got a couple of things pertaining specifically to understanding how well your grads do when they leave here.
Yes.
Do you have an alumni association here?
Every class does.
But there's not, there's not, so, I think that there's a real, my, my experience when I, when I work with districts across the state is there are very few districts that do a great job tracking how well students do when they're gone, right? And usually alumni associations and sometimes educational foundations, do you have an educational foundation here?
We have, we have a community foundation that a lot of our donations go into as a whole.
Okay.
Scholarships come from it.
Scholarships are usually there to manage it, either of those.
So, you know, an interesting, an interesting and specific work thing, and maybe it's not this year, maybe it's a five-year goal, is to, to think about what can we do to better understand where our alumni are going? Where they are, how successful are they? Your question specifically about, you know, were the kids that we, that went directly to college or university, did they graduate in four years?
And I think though, and trio, pledge year of program is tracking some of that. I know, I've seen it, I haven't looked for it recently on ODE's website. You can even look at incoming students from every school district, every, you know, so like we have one high school and HHS three and so forth, you can look at where their placements are. So you can look at how many of those incoming freshmen are in, placed into developmental types of courses, we used to call them remedial. And, and when you start looking at that, Marion City's pretty comparative to at least about five or six years ago when I looked at that data initially, very similar to Delaware or HHS, believe it or not. So, you know, when you look at that data, that's telling a different story than certainly our state report.
Sure. But I think all of those are interesting questions and interesting conversations about how can we be better informed about the success and the happiness of, satisfaction of our alumni when they leave our district and how well they do. So I think, I think that's-
Absolutely.
And can you tie that in ever with CCP data, you know, because I-
I'd say alumni initiatives, alumni classes.
I'm interested too to see how, you know, these students-
Does it translate?
Right. And, you know, what did they do with the classes that they took at MTC? Did they continue on? Or how relevant was, you know, that type of education?
A lot of them take courses that are not relevant to their program, it's letting it pass up.
I'm sorry?
A lot of them in CCP are taking classes that are not relevant to their pathway to college.
See, and that's what I, that's what I'm saying, can we, can we-
That's a great, that's another great discussion, is how successful are we with College Credit Plus, right? And what is a cost benefit to our district? And are students that are using College Credit Plus actually benefiting from it in the long run, to Kelly's point? You know, did I take a class here at Marion, a CCP class, that I actually was able to apply to a major? You know, that's, that's-
Because we could definitely qualify that.
Yeah. Lots of interesting questions.
Ted, do you remember the grant that we had probably eight years ago? And part of that grant was providing a counselor or contact with graduates out of school, and they were to make contact with them and report back.
Right, I remember.
And I can't remember the grant, it lasted several years. I don't know where that data is, but it's the kind of data that you were asking for. I left high school, whether I went to college, or whether I went into the workforce, they would follow up with them, like, okay, six months after they graduated, then a year after they graduated. I just don't know where that-
Yeah, they just asked about our daughter, is she still at Bluffton? Is she, is she taking honors class? So that, it is still, we had that text a month ago.
That's when we made that grant, right?
Yeah.
It was my very first year, it was a really big grant that went on, huge, but I, I just don't know what happened to that data.
So, this is specifically the kinds of information that your administrator, that Olympia, Veronica, and other administrators will wanna get their hands on and will wanna understand a little bit better so that they can come to the board and say, you know, this is how they are going about gaining, gaining ground in the outcome that they outlined for us. So this is, this is just some ideas for you to think about as, as your administrators work towards a work plan that the board can improve from coming here and that all of you can agree to. So, this is food for thought. And thank you very much, Quinn, we'll move on. Okay. So, so that now we get to the how. So now all of this, so the board theoretically has approved the strategic plan, approved the big goal areas, understands the what, and has been able to define the what for superintendent, treasurer, and then they for other administrators. So their job is the how. So their job is the how. And that's how are we going to meet the outcomes as designated by the board and advance across our goals? And if they're not these four pillars, whatever the goals will be. So, specific and measurable activities and projects aligned to the standards and the pillars. So I did the same exercise here that we did with the board. These are the five superintendent standards. And I know that your board president emailed these to you, emailed a book to you that was created by BASSA and a whole bunch of other organizations that got together, gosh, I think it's been about nine or 10 years ago, to talk about what standards are workable for superintendents. There are five standards also for treasurers, slightly different, but also five, just like there are five for boards. So the five standards for the superintendent are vision and continuous improvement, communication and collaboration, policies and governance, instructional resources, and leadership and special projects. So what, what I would challenge Olympia to do is to consider the outcomes and the critical issues and think about these four pillars and what specific activities might she propose doing in the coming year that are aligned with these pillars and that she can also align to any of these superintendent standards. In any given year, your superintendent and your treasurer will be uber-focused in one standard area over another, or one goal area over another. There will be things that the board has identified as supercritical. And it might be a policy of evidence thing, it might be an instruction thing. If, if test scores are the number one thing you all want to be focused on in the next year, test scores and growth and academic achievement and all of that kind of stuff, then I would expect a lot of her attention to be under instructional resources. Again, we can't have priorities across every one of these boxes. But if she can think and propose to you work that is aligned to your goals and certainly to the superintendent's standards, it, it helps her to form a work plan that's not a constant moving target. That's what we don't, we don't want for her. Okay. So I would propose that when you think, when your superintendent thinks about the work that she would like to propose doing and have you approve as a plan moving forward, that every activity, and it might be a big activity, and it might be a very specific, kind of narrowly focused one, that she provide this information to you. The goal it attaches to, the outcome that you said you wanted to set and what that attaches to. Again, the specific work, maybe it's re-energize the alumni association for Marion City Schools or Marion Harding High School or whatever it might be. As an example, that's the specific work, is to form an alumni committee, the resources and staffing that would be needed, how long she thinks it might take, and the key steps. And the evidence, you know, how will we know that this is working? That this is advancing us toward our outcome? And what is the evaluation or the monitoring? What is, what's the, the measuring stick that's going to be used that shows us that this was worthwhile then too? So, the work plan that she brings to the board. The other thing that I would, I would really encourage is a conversation around your priorities, right? So let's say she brings to you a work plan that says, along with all the usual things I'm going to do as a superintendent, which is 150 things a day, these are, these are the five or six specific outcomes-related things that I'm proposing that I get started on in the course of the year. I think a conversation with the five of you on your priorities. Scott, you look at those six and you say, you know what, Olympia, I think these are pretty good six. I think that they definitely align with our outcomes and what we said was our critical issues this year. But for me, number three, that's homey bucket. Number three for me of the six you proposed, that's the biggest deal. And maybe Rocky or Tara says, you know what, I don't think it's three. For me, it's five. I think in fairness to your superintendent, it would be great if she understood what the priorities are too. You know, if, if all five of you like this list of six and she makes great progress in four of those, but along comes April and because, you know, some critical thing happened in the district or we, Dr. Wood, you know, had another mini pandemic or something, and two of those things did not get enough attention, and then she loses out because she didn't know that Kelly's priority was one and just, just didn't, didn't get the work. So have a conversation about not only her proposed work plan, but on the priorities as well, okay? So, I would propose that she brings that work plan to you and she presents that to the board for discussion and consensus. And maybe the board says, yeah, those six look great. Maybe the board says, I don't think six is realistic, six isn't important to us this year. Or maybe they say, we really like these six and we want to add seventh. And this is the seventh we want to add. But I would like your superintendent to have a very clear idea of the key areas of work that you would like her to strive for this year, either alone or with colleagues throughout the district. And, and you, and she presents that to you and you have a conversation and there's some consensus. So in my world, I, I like to put a July, August timeline on that. So she knows what she's doing as the school year gets rolling. Then I would suggest that you discuss a process for formative evaluation for your superintendent. And this is basically, goes in line with our no surprises doctrine. And that's that she takes that list, that six or whatever you've approved to, that work plan, and she sits down and she has lunch one day with Rocky and Kelly. Or she has coffee with Tara and Scott, or she has lunch with Ted or whatever it is, or maybe all five of you in an executive session before or after a board meeting. That's fine. But you talk about that work plan. How, how are things going? Are things moving along at the pace that you thought they would? What's hanging you up? What support can the board give you that would make things move a little better? What's happening really well? Is there anything on that work plan that you're just surprised at how excited people are? Or how excited you are, or how suc, how much success we're having? But we have those formative evaluations and I'm suggesting two, three per year. And it can be one board member or two board members, or it can be all five of you. But those happen and you and she then have a good idea where the work is. The last thing we want is for her to come to spring and, and all of a sudden, you know, Rocky or Tara, you don't feel like you were clued in that something you thought was a big priority just has not had any attention. And this is not to say that stuff doesn't happen, right? But when stuff happens that derails the best of plans, the formative evaluations give her an opportunity to share that with you as well. I know you said number five was really important, I started it, but this is why it's stalled, right? And maybe the board can help get around that challenge and maybe it just needs to be something that goes to the back burner. But she has an opportunity to share that with you in all, in all fairness and to be transparent. Okay? All right. Then the summative evaluation. I'm proposing that your administrator does something that goes to each of you individually, or to all of you, right? Collective, goes to all of you. She does a memo to the board, and this is my, my self-evaluation based on the work plan we all agreed to last summer. And as you know through our formative conversations, here's the progress that was made in each of these areas. These are the reasons why things didn't happen or did happen. This is how I would grade myself and my staff on each of these things. And then I would propose that she gives that to all five of you. What happens oftentimes is that board members then individually review that document and make notes. This is where I agree with her, this is where I disagree with her, this is what, what I would give kudos to, this is, these are my constructive criticism. And then the five of you bring your individual documents together and you talk, you talk as a group about that. And then as a group, you come out with, with a consensus document. And that's basically, I like a really fairly brief memo to the file that just says, these are the things that, these are the six priorities we agreed to. These are the things we, she did beautifully this year that went great. These are the two things we hope get more attention over the course of the next year. And, and that's it. And that that happens in May. And then we roll into summer. And based on progress and success in 23, 24, you're, you're ready to have a conversation about 24, 25.
When do you normally set those priorities, like we're doing tonight, is almost August?
I think it's, I think it's summer. So that, that original work plan happens in July and August. I think when you, when you close out one academic a year in May or first part of June or whatever, these, these dates aren't carved in stone, it just gives you something to work toward. You're, you're ready to roll into, she's ready to roll into goals and, and objectives for
There's not a lot of months in there to see data that will confirm.
No, I mean, that's a good point. And, and hopefully, some of the work she's doing will, there will be some initial, some initial, right? Initial thoughts and data and ideas, initial feedback from teachers, initial data from students, obviously. Probably a lot of, depending on the goals that she sets, a lot of that will be contingent on assessment data. Which this year, when did that finally come out?
June.
June? June?
It was out in June.
It, it may be June before, you know, she can, so this may have to, depending on what her goal was and what specific work she, she said she was going to do and that you agreed to. The evidence for that, you'll have to talk about when that's going to be available in, like your calendar according to that.
But we have to be cognizant of the time period to achieve certain results. If you say you want a 1% increase or decrease in behavioral problems as defined in edifying, is that enough months to see that happen?
I, I agree. And it could be that the board sets a 5% goal and your superintendent comes to you and says, 5%, I'm not going to have that in a year. But let's, let's shoot for 2%. Or she'll have an idea about how close you are, or when 5% might be, might be doable. You know, maybe she says, I think this is a two-year, this is a two-year outcome that I can try and be. And so maybe it's a three-year outcome. So I, I think all of this is specific to the particular outcome expected and the, and the way that she wants to accomplish it.
So they might occur over multiple years then, right? Because she might have the same outcome for three years or something.
Sure.
She can piggyback off of one and build.
I mean, you might say, we want 100% graduation rate, right? That could be, that could be a 10-year goal, be a five or 10-year goal. But the idea, but, so you'll have to talk as a board too about, do we want, do we want our measuring stick to be what we can accomplish in one year? So maybe it is 100% graduation rate, but we're going to go for, you know, going from 86 to 88 in the first year and see what happens. Other questions? Does the process make sense? Does it seem fair, equitable, consensus-abled? How do you feel about it? Makes sense to you?
Yeah. I mean, I, I've looked at, looked at saying just like the months, but I know this is just a suggestion that you're giving.
Right. And probably, and it could be, could be, it could be that, let's just go back to that example of six things. It could be that you have really good data about two of them at the end of the year and the other four you may not have final data, but you could have progress data, right? You could have information about how well the staff are warming to whatever it is that you've gotten. Or it could be that in your communication goal, the board and you said, well, I'm going to try and have five learning sessions with Veronica over the course of the next year about financial literacy in terms of public education and try and teach people about our budget. And I'd like to do five in a year. Well, and maybe you only get three done, right? And three doesn't necessarily mean failure, but you'll have to then talk about, about that. So I think a lot of this stuff is moving targets and that's why the formative assessments are
So the goals should be measurable with data. Something like culture, trust, how do you measure that?
Well, the first step could be implementing a staff survey, a culture survey. Right? So I think
Valid data.
Yeah, I think a very specific toward, towards improving our culture, a specific thing could be a staff culture survey. That will be this year's goal, is to do, is to implement and gather data from a staff culture survey so we know exactly how big or small our problem is.
If you have a baseline.
Right.
We kind of do.
Right.
We had that culture survey.
It might, if you already had a culture survey, then maybe it's looking at that data and taking one aspect of that survey and her designing something that she's going to do to, to nibble away at one piece of what the survey said people should, would love to see improvement.
And I think you and I had had a conversation at a conference about there are districts now doing culture surveys frequently.
Yes. So to your point, have a baseline, that's awesome. But are we improving? So there are many districts that do the same survey every two years, for example. Every 18 months, every two years, maybe every three years, where 80% of the questions on that survey are the same. And maybe a couple of them are new or different based on what's happening now, right? How things are different. So I think especially, and also, research shows that survey data, people respond better to surveys if it sort of is a habit and they're used to it. We all know that our community wants, wants to be invested in our districts. They want to give you information, they want to share with you their feelings about your school districts. And sometimes it's just, it takes, it's trial and error to figure out how they want to give you that information. You have to try to put this.
They have a little SMARTful thing?
Yeah.
That's something that we should, I can hand it out to everyone that
Yeah, that's fine. So, yeah, I'm, I'm, I love SMART goals. So when your superintendent outlines, and, and her staff are hurt too, I think it makes it easier for her. But when she, and it's, the, the culture, the survey is, is a great example of something that can be a SMART objective. So she wants it measurable, she wants a timeline, she wants it realistic or relevant. Sometimes the R means different things, it needs to be specific. So communicate better, for me, is not fun. But, you know, send out, create a news letter to reach parents through email. To me, that's a specific communication tool. So we want her to be specific to you and we want you to be specific for her in terms of the work that she's doing. It's kind of like these outcomes, having a measurable attached to your outcomes. It's, it's hard for, for you to say, improve graduation rates, that's huge. But, you know, part of graduation rates is probably keeping kids in school. So let's talk about something that we can do that will address trends.
You mentioned earlier that the superintendent evaluation process.
Uh huh.
Is that, I, I, I recall using that for several years. It's a multi-page checkbox kind of
Yeah.
Is that part of what you're talking about?
Well
Or is that, you're, you're talking more about measuring against the goals you've set.
Yeah. We have, we have that tool available.
Yeah.
And some districts use it, but many board members call and say, oh my gosh, Cheryl, this is so complicated, I can't, I can't take it. But the important thing is that you talk about her work as it aligns to the five standards. And that she can talk about her work as it aligns to the five standards. What form you use isn't important to her. It's important that you have the conversation and that you have the conversation that she's able to show you that she's showing growth and having success across vision, accountability, resources, teaching and learning, that kind of thing. So if her work, if she can express her work and you can measure her work and align her work to the standards, I don't care what form you use. And just as an FYI, we're in the process of doing some rethinking and simplifying. Standards won't change, but making it more useful for boards, I think that will change.
I thought a lot of the stuff on that form just wasn't very relevant.
Right, right. We want it to be relevant, but you know, it needs to be relevant, not just in standards, but to your, to your strategic plan.
But there are other things that are like communications, the superintendent communicate well with staff. Those kinds of questions are there, but those are sort of outside, well, they can be part of
Yes.
The goal sense, but it might not be like, you know.
You know, I mean, you could have a district that says in communication, a district can say, I don't feel like our superintendent say, I don't feel like our superintendent does a good a job, does enough of a job on communicating with each board member. He's great with our board president, but the rest of us never hear from him, right? And that's something that we hear commonly. So a specific goal in communication for that superintendent that year might be to improve the way he communicates with all five board members and specific ways that he might demonstrate that he's doing that.
I only found that form helpful as a thinking tool.
Right.
To go through a checklist of things that you're thinking about.
Yeah. I always tell board members, don't worry about the tool, but do think about the standards.
Yep. So then our next step, since we've kind of set some things here, is for Olivia to create her goals and then we set.
I, I would, yeah. I would propose that Quinn and I will take these sheets, go back to the office and translate them to a Word document, send it to you, and then I propose that the next step would be that she takes a stab at designing some specific work activities that she believes will move towards some of these outcomes and address some of these critical issues. Because even if the pillars aren't the ones you like or the ones that you're going to have long-term, these are, right? The critical issues are relevant, super relevant. So she can start on that initial thought, my initial thoughts on, on 23, 24 work objectives and give you all something to discuss, my consensus.
And then we're perfect? Good? Yeah.
I, I think our pillars need some redefining a bit, hearing all of this. It's been painful for me a bit because I remember what they were, in part, not every word of them, but I think we were trying to fit some things in that we never intended, but that's okay if we redefine that pillar to mean something else.
Well, part of that would be, you know, would be, you know, an error on my part if, if I didn't perceive your goals the way that you perceived them.
Communicating that message back to the staff is very important.
Sure.
We have lived with this for five or six years. In fact, just two months ago or three months ago, at a board meeting, staff came and reported on each goal. And so they, they've got ingrained in their mind what their, their goals are for each of those, their objectives are in each of those pillars. You know, they reported on data of achievement scores and so forth. The high school came and reported on their pathways and what they were doing to achieve that under the, that pillar. So we got to be, in my opinion, careful about how we message, message that so that I don't think, I don't want the staff to say, here we go again, the board administration is changing everything we've worked on in the last six years.
And point well taken. And what, but what I would also say is, I, I, I love it that I'm hearing about a staff that understands how to work within a strategic plan, right? Whether the goals are the right ones or not, but, but they're doing that, right? They're demonstrating to you that, that they can follow the leader. And it's just your responsibility to show them, you know, what, what that is. All right? Does that sound okay?
Mm-hmm.
You okay?
Mm-hmm.
Anybody have any other questions? All right.
We're open.
Okay, we'll take it back and we'll, I'll work on this, actually I'll work on this in the next couple of days and we'll do something as soon as possible because I know as we move towards the new school year, this is, time is of the essence, right? So we'll, we'll get this turned around for you a little bit.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Anything else for the good of the order? If you want more discussion?
For the good of the order.
For the good of the order. That's old school. Anything?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else for the good of the order? If you want more discussion?
For the good of the order.
For the good of the order. That's old school. Anything?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yay. Thank you. Anything else for the good of the order? If you want more discussion?
For the good of the order.
For the good of the order. That's old school. Anything?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yay. Thank you. Anything else for the good of the order? If you want more discussion?
For the good of the order.
For the good of the order. That's old school.